Our regular session that since it's now 7:30, do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to start up again, but I am going to reread our announcement of notice since we now have the public here. We did not before. So this is going to take a second. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Starletter and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. During this meeting, we ask that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If needed, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth issues and believe that limiting video would help, we may do so. We will have at least two public comment periods. If that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if I miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your actual hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately. In Highland Park, this means no screaming, obscenities, or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted and we will come back to them at a later time. If the speaker is the final commenter at the last final comment period, we will invite them to return to our next meeting. And with that, let us do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Cue it up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undivided, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
And the thank you. So we had one communication on March 12th from Karen Fenton on reopening the schools. So we have minutes from February 2nd, 2021. Do any board members have any comments about those before we vote? No? Okay, so I'd like to move the approval of those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll call Linda.
Ms. Marusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Islevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor for the superintendent's report.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Polly Minden first for the-
Oh, I missed that. Pardon me, Polly, so sorry.
That's okay.
So Polly, please, please give us the, the student representative report.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right. So at the high school, the Highland Park High School Library will be hosting a virtual Battle of the Books competition this Wednesday. The high schools attending are Edison, J.B. Stevens, Passaic Tech, North Warren, and Delaware Valley. High School, or Highland Park, will have two teams participating. All seven of the books that they are using were accessed through the high school library using a new streaming service, Junior Library Guild, which is available to the entire high school for then to access a variety of different titles. Everyone is invited to attend the Battle of the Books at 9:20 a.m. in Ms. Puccio's Zoom room. So, um, the Highland Park Community Center, Teen Center will be hosting in-person support groups for high school students beginning April 7th at 1:00 p.m. The location is still to be determined. In a supportive environment, participants will have the chance to share their feelings about the pandemic, learn about coping mechanisms, and socialize with their peers. Middle School, there are no updates at the middle school. Bartle, a big thank you to Sustainable Jersey for, Sustainable Jersey for schools for awarding Bartle a $10,000 grant to bring the little sis, little sisters in the know to program to our school. Congratulations to Tracy Maiden and the Bartle Green team. At Irving, they're hosting another Bust and Move Night with Mr. Luxembourg, so they're excited for that. And then they also have their annual Earth Day garden cleanup taking place on April 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And that's it for the student report.
Polly, thanks so much. Now, Scott, over to you.
There, I'm, I'm, I'm up. So this is the happiest time of the evening, at least for me, and I'm sure for many of the board members, because we get to honor some of our Irving friends who are here and some of their friendly teachers and support staff who I see here too. So thank you for faculty who came out. So with that, I'm going to introduce Ms. McNally, our principal. Ms. McNally, take it away.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's wonderful to be here and it's wonderful to see all of your faces today. So I have a couple of words to say about two of our fantastic students. So what I'll do is I'll say a couple of words and then their teachers, feel free. Our first student that we're going to honor tonight is Nirvan Kumar. There we are. And, you know, with online learning, Nirvan is Mrs. Claslo's student. He is in kindergarten and Nirvan has been part of our remote learning. So even with remote learning, Nirvan is just an absolute pleasure. He has wonderful attendance. His parents have been so supportive, which has really been helping Mrs. Claslo along and helping Nirvan with his studies. He's engaging. He's productive. He is engaging in learning experiences that I will let Mrs. Claslo speak a little bit more about. And every teacher and every principal should be blessed to have a student so excited about learning. So Nirvan, I am very happy to give you this certificate tonight. We all are. We are so happy that you joined us and I love seeing your smile tonight. Congratulations and your family.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And his mom is getting just a little sentimental.
Yeah, this is, this is what I hate, like, yeah.
Okay, Ms. McNally, you're back.
Yes, ah. Mrs. Claslo, do you want to say a couple of things?
I have to say that, you know, we've been doing this for a year and I remember going into this being like, how am I ever going to do this? And Nirvan is one of the most successful of all of my students. And I, he's always on target, ready to go every single day. And working along with his family has been an amazing journey for me as an educator and I'm sure for his parents as well. We, we've learned from each other. Nirvan brightens every single day. He brightens every one of my days. And I am so proud of him and so proud of his family for all, all the support that they give. So I'm really thankful for you. And Nirvan, I, I couldn't applaud you more. I'm just so, so, so proud of you. So keep up the good work. And I know there's better stuff coming down the road. I know it. I know it. I, I know more growth is waiting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNally. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to you as parents because, you know, it takes a team effort, especially right now. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Thank Ms. Lafferty. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. McNally, your next friend.
Our next friend that is being recognized tonight is Aleah Recto. She is a kindergarten student and her teacher is Mrs. Picasia, Picasi, who is also here with us this evening. Thank you for joining. And, you know, when I read her nomination that Mrs. Picasi so beautifully wrote, I just, again, it's the same thing. This is a team effort. This is a family approach to engaging and instruction right now in these uncertain times. And Mrs. Picasi just speaks so highly of Aleah and how she's taken to, to learning on Zoom so wonderfully, how she is respectful. She's a wonderful friend. She makes student connections with those in her classroom. She really takes what she learns from social emotional lessons and she'll spontaneously begin saying good morning to multiple classmates. And it really has prompted others to join in as well. And she really does an awesome job making the class feel like community, which I know is also so hard to do right now. So Aleah, you should be really proud of yourself and to your mom. Thank you for all you're doing as well. So congratulations to Aleah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ah, Mrs. Picasi, would you like to add a couple of words?
Sure. When we started in September, the thing that I think all teachers were really struggling with was how am I going to build a community on a Zoom screen? And it's extremely difficult. We know, we're experts at doing it in the classroom. Doing it on a computer screen is a whole nother deal. So what I did at the beginning was I did a lot of social emotional lessons about how do you make a friend on Zoom? Because that's really a hard concept for a little one. So we talked about you smile, or you call someone's name, or you tell someone your name, like very simplistic. And I was so pleased that Aleah was the very first student who just started doing that. And she continued to be a bright spot in our classroom. I've been watching her the past couple of days, especially since I got the notice that she was going to get this award. And I just noticed that she is, she's just full of life. She's happy to be with her classmates. When I tell them, okay, we're going to do playtime. You're going to go into a breakout room with this person. She's so excited, but it doesn't matter who it is. She's excited to be with her classmates. So I give you a round of applause, Aleah, and your parents. They are doing a fantastic job, raising a wonderful young person. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone who's here, Ms. McNally, parents, students, friends, we call them friends at Irving and Bartle, don't we?
Yes, we do.
I can see you nodding yes. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to shift gears and suggest if they would like to step out of the meeting, they do so now, Ms. McNally and, and our friends and their parents, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. So we won't be offended if you press the leave button in the lower right corner of your Zoom window. So bye-bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, bye.
And with that, I'm going to move on to the next part of my presentation, which is about the budget. And I don't, I'll take a reprieve from making a formal presentation about the state of the schools, which I've been doing at almost every board meeting for several months now. Tonight, I have to present the preliminary budget for the next fiscal year 2021, 2022. So I'll spend the next 10, 15 minutes going over the process that led to a balanced budget. I'm proud to say balanced budget that, that didn't do as much harm, fortunately, as some of our previous budgets have, have done. So I'll go into that in detail. I'll also be verbalizing the, the numbers. Those of you who may be visually impaired can access my presentation in various formats, including an Excel file format as well as a text-only format. The documents are right now live on the main page of the district's website, hpschools.net. On the left side, there's a new link which is titled Budget 2021-2022 Information. I'll also post the three different formatted files on Facebook and, and on the pop-up that appears on the front page of the website. So briefly, let me just remind the board and the community that the way we develop a budget in Highland Park is through collaboration. And, and it takes quite a bit of time because we build it from the ground up, starting with regular meetings that Ms. Hopeful, the business administrator, and I have with each one of our administrators. They take place for about an hour, hour and a half with each individual responsible for a portion of the budget. And we essentially go over every line in the budget, every account, every line in the account to make sure that the requested expenditure is valid. And in some cases, if there is less of an expenditure being proposed than in previous years, we'll ask the administrator why. In other words, there has to be validity, there has to be validity to every proposed expenditure, whether it's an increase in expenditure or decrease. Then the administrators come out at night, although we did it virtually this past round, and meet with the Board Finance and Facilities Committee on which serve President Mark Krieger, Darcy Simarusti, who was the ex-board president, ex-finance chair, Rob Magaziner, and Aunt Gowan. We then present the preliminary budget to the board, which I'm doing now, and will do again in May. It may, if there are any changes made to the preliminary budget I'm presenting tonight, they'll definitely be noted at that meeting. So first, I'd like to talk about, as I've done in the past, what we propose to be the primary expenditures that will make up our, our budget. I'm going to read the numbers aloud, again, for those who are visually impaired. The first category of expenditure has to do with school supplies and extracurricular activities. So this is a catch-all category for everything from paper, which we still use, to, to the basic supplies that our elementary teachers are using, such as tactile-related manipulatives for math lessons, science lessons, and whatnot. This year, we actually saw a reduction in expenditures by $40,800, if I round that number. Our total amount proposed for expenditures in this area is rounding $405,000, again, for a decrease since the previous budget, this, this year's budget, which I've been looking at as the previous budget, decrease of $40,800. The next category of expenditures has to do with district operations. So that means things like utility bills, electric, water. It also means that we are putting money aside to maintain basic infrastructure. Everything from landscaping, making sure that the grassy areas kids are using is, is in good shape, to roof repairs if necessary. The total amount that we are proposing be expended by rounding is $536 million, five, I'm sorry, 5,000, $5,396,000. That is a change, an increase of rounding $176,000. The other category that we have to account for has to do with our programs, curriculum and instruction in particular. We're not talking salaries and really what drives the programs. Teachers are just talking about the development of curricula, to be sure that we're constantly aligning what we're doing now in the classroom to the latest standards and best practices, and also professional development, all the things that we offer the teachers to get them up to speed on the latest practices. Rounding, the proposed expenditure is $86,000, and that's a change, a slight change of, if I round $1,600. Salaries make up the largest part of our budget when it comes to expenditures. This year, salaries, which include the contractual increase, and I'll break this out in a couple of slides so you can see separately how we broke down some of our salary categories. But our, our total expenditure for salaries, including the contractual increase that our teachers receive, is grounding $19,026,000. That's $19,026,000, which means we are seeing an increase of $1,146,000, $1,146,000 increase. And again, that's a result of the, the steps on the guide that teachers are moving up, which is contractual, and also the addition of, of some staff that we had to complement to our existing staff. And I'll talk about this additional staff in a couple of slides. Our benefits actually went down this year, a result of primarily two things, a new health benefits package that I'm sure many of the board members and members of the public are aware, came to pass by the legislature in Trenton, that offers educators a special health benefit package, which saves districts and the recipients of the health benefits, the educators, money. So our total cost of benefits we propose next year will be rounding $3,781,000. So we are seeing a reduction of rounding $329,000, a reduction from this year to the next budget. Special education salaries are pulled out of the salary package because we do have a sizable number of special needs students who require extraordinary services. I, I like to think that I attribute the program popularity because of the, the high value we offer our residents, thanks to a stable department and some wonderful support personnel, faculty. Our salary for special education support staff, that includes paraprofessions, as well as faculty, when rounding, we propose next year will be $5,849,000. So that's an increase of $732,000. I have two more categories to go over before I move forward in, in my presentation. Our out-of-district special education costs continue to increase the, but I will say less so than we've seen in recent years. The increased, I'm sorry, the total expenditure we're proposing for special education costs to send students to other districts, which we are required to do after an IUP calls for a session, this number includes transportation to the schools outside of Highland Park, equals rounding $4,795,000 as proposed expenditures. That's an increase from this fiscal year to the next fiscal year of $143,000. And the last category of expenditures I'll go over has to do with our in-district special education costs. In other words, the things that we supply our kids who were right here in Highland Park. So this has to do with supplies, could be textbooks, could be technology, adaptive technology supplies. The total cost, and by the way, this is not, includes salary. I separated special ed salary from this cost. And this is just for items outside of salary of our regular staff. It does include, besides supplies, I should add contracted services. We do, from time to time, need to contract speech therapists, occupational therapists, sometimes school psychologists to do evaluations that we might not be able to conduct internally. The total amount that we are proposing for expenditures next year is $1,075,000. This is actually a decrease, a slight decrease of $1,200. Again, I'm rounding in all these cases. Now, the next slide I'm showing has to do with a breakdown of our special education costs for sending students to other schools. As I just pointed out, we, we saw less of an increase than we've seen in previous years when supporting those kids who need to be transported to other schools. Now, these are students who are some of our neediest students, who we could not provide services for here in district. I'm not, I have several years' worth of expenditure amounts and the changes from year to year. So I'm not going to go over every item, but I do want to touch on the current fiscal year totals for special education out of district tuition and special education out of district transportation for the schools out of district. And then I'll go over next year's proposed budget and what the increase or decrease looks like. This fiscal year, our special education out of district tuition costs equal rounding $3,482,000. Our transportation costs for these students this year equals rounding $1,313,000. We are proposing next year that our tuition costs be $3,643,000, and our transportation costs amount to $1,296,000. So in terms of special education out of district tuition, we are seeing an increase from this fiscal year to next year of $161,000, if I round. And that again is a, is a, is not as drastic an increase as we've seen in previous years. We actually saw a decrease in our transportation costs, which could be a result of various things, including distance of students come, coming from Highland Park to going to other schools, to the potential for there to be multiples going to out-of-district schools who share buses. We actually saw a reduction that totaled $17,800,000. So, I'm sorry, let me correct myself, $17,790,000. That's a reduction in our special education out of district transportation costs. The next slide looks at the breakdown of salary for our support staff and faculty and leadership, as I suggested I would do. I, I like to every year show what the increase in our salary expenditures are. We, we have unfortunately had to increase expenditures in this category every year in, in almost all cases because of the increased need for a special education support staff and faculty. This year, we are seeing an increase of salary of $472,000. And that's just purely a result of the contractual obligations we have to move everybody from one step to the next. Now, in terms of the increases of staff that we've had to make to the numbers of personnel we have in district, we, we had to increase a number of faculties in the area of special education and support staff this year because of an influx of additional special education students we didn't anticipate would be coming through our doors. And we do have to increase our staff, mostly in the area of special education, next year because we're projecting even more students enter our program. Be mindful that the special education department, the district, has to follow very strict compliance regulations that guide us as to the number of kids who can be served by teach certain, certain numbers of teachers and support staff in each classroom. Once we exceed the number of students in some of our classrooms, we happen, we'll have to open up additional classrooms. The proposed expenditure for increases in our staff alone, this is not now considering just a standard contractual obligation, we have to move everybody from one step to another. But the proposed expenditures for increased staff to complement our existing staff is $673,000 rounding. I just have a couple of more slides. I do want to talk about revenues. You know, when, when you're putting a budget together, it really comes boils down to two things, how much money you need to spend and how much money you bring in, expenditures and revenues, and then you make sure the two balance, which they do in this proposed budget. We are receiving a little more state aid than we have in the past, a difference of $144,000. The total amount of state aid that we'll be receiving is $4,423,000. We, as we've done in the past, will do our best to reduce expenditures at this time of the year, from March to June, if we can, so that we can carry money from this year over to the next year's budget and still maintain our services, our staff, without having to reduce staff. This year, we also saw additional savings because of the pandemic, particularly in the area of transportation. When you total our savings, we actually saved, because of the pandemic, $728,000 if I'm rounding. So we anticipate we're going to be able to carry over the million dollars that we have in, in previous years, and on top of that, $728,000. So for a total of revenue, we project we'll be able to help offset our, our losses will be $1,728,000. I have to point out that I know this sounds like, that sounds like a big number, but be mindful that in the last several years, I've had to close a roughly $1.2 million gap after my administrators present their budgets to me and, and we strip things to the bare minimum. That's why unfortunately, I've had to reduce staff almost every year since I've been superintendent, unfortunately. A couple of more revenue- A couple of more revenue items I want to share with you. We'll be transferring funds from our capital reserves, which we've done in the past. This year we'll transfer $512,000, which is a, an increase of $45,000 in what we've transferred from reserves into our operational account in previous years. We anticipate receiving $600,000 in extraordinary aid. This is the money that we get usually in late June or July that the state provides us to help accommodate the additional special needs students who districts like Highland Park didn't anticipate we would be servicing. We anticipate this will be a $300,000 change for the better in revenue that we've seen in previous years. And finally, we will anticipate in terms of tax, the tax levy, taxes of $30,829,000 strain, revenue stream from taxes, which is a change of, an increase in previous years of $472,000. I've got just a couple of more slides. This is the last slide that, that contains numbers. I, I'm not going to, what we're looking at is what the financial impact on the resident is, me being one of them. I'm not going to go over the several years of history here I presented, but I will touch on this year's general fund expenditures, in other words, what the total budget is costing. What percent we will be applying for the tax levy and how debt service is going to impact us in a, in a good way. So this current fiscal year, our total expenditures were $35,611,000. Next year, we anticipate our expenditures will total $36,707,000. Again, I'm rounding. The tax levy will remain at 2% as it had last year. It's worth noting that in previous years, 2019, 2020, we were at 2.92% of a tax levy. In 2018, 2019, we were at 4%, 2017, 2018, we were at 3.7%. So we're able to maintain a 2% tax levy again going into next year. Now, when you factor in what we refer to as debt service, in other words, the debt that the district accumulates to, or has been managing, because it hasn't accumulated additional debt, has been managing to pay for some of the major facilities upgrades that were made before my time here as superintendent. When you factor in how we've been able to refinance the district's debt, the tax levy impact next year on the resident is actually going to be 1.56%, which is the lowest it's been since 2017, 2018. This current fiscal year, the tax levy was 1.89, 89% when you factor in the refinance. Our business administrator was actually able to conduct another refinance this year. So thanks to refinancing in the last couple of years, we were able, we've been able to keep the tax levy impact on the, on the homeowner low, relatively low compared to previous years. So again, tax levy when you include the debt service. So this is the impact, this is the tax levy is going to have on the resident. It's 1.56%, which equates to an average increase, an increase on the average home of $68. This current year, we were fortunate that because of ratables, so those are the the businesses in town that generate revenue and help to contribute to the total tax savings of the community. This year, the average increase for a home, an increase for an average home was $7. In previous years, it was $123, $252, $71, respectively, going back three years. Next year, we're proposing it'll be $68 on the average home. So finally, I just want to remind everybody how information that I just shared can be downloaded in various formats. Excel format, text only format, and a PDF version of the slides I just shared as they appear. You can go to the main page for the district, which is HPschools.net. On the left side, you'll see a panel that says budget 21, 20, 2021, 2022 information. And you just click and download everything you need. I'll also be placing the information on the Facebook page as well as a pop up on the website. So with that, I'm going to open up for questions if they're already from the board and ask that Mark Krieger, you step up and, and fill in any blanks that I may have missed, being that you're finance chair and you're so good with the, with those numbers.
If I might, I had a couple of comments. The first is, having done my taxes recently, the tax levy for the town, including 61% of that is the schools. My tax levy, my house between last year and this year went down. And that also happened between 2017 and 18. So taxes have gone down in two of the last four years. In the, the next year, the $68, if all things stay equal, which they might, they might actually get better. $68 is a little bit more than half a percent on an average house in Highland Park. So it's a very, very low increase. And depending on how we can use some of the new federal government money we've been allocated, that number might go down even more. So again, we may be looking at numbers of taxes for homeowners not actually going up but going down, which is not, not 100% but is possible. So as our auditor said last week, if you were here, we've put a lot of money back into taxpayer relief and that's what we've done in three of the last five years. So that's my only comments and I don't know if any board members have any questions or comments. Michelle, I see your hand and then Chris.
I just wanted to give a really quick thank you to Linda for all of those refinances. I know that we have a really efficient and really intelligent financial team in Linda. And also with Mark and Scott working together. So I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, I repeat that. Thank you so much, Linda, for all the work you've done on this and Scott. And, and Chris.
Yeah, thank, thank you too, as well. My, my, my basic understanding was that the savings that we had, you know, because of the bus, bus transportation costs were basically wiped out by the special education increases. I, I just realized I'm a little, still a little bit confused about the special education increases. They, they seem to appear in two different categories. There's around a 600K in salary increases and then there's a sort of a separate 600K increase. How do those two expenses compare? What makes them different?
Linda, do you want to elaborate?
You referring to two different slides?
Yeah, I think, I think what Chris is, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're referring to the slide I showed about salary. And then the slide I showed about out of district tuition costs.
Can you go back to the first slide?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, to the one that has the salary increase?
Yeah, yeah, give me one second. You're referring to the, this number here?
Yeah, so of the, of the salary increase of the 1, 1.1 million, around 600K of that is, is per new positions, is that right?
Okay, out of the 1.1 million, 732 are special ed related salary increases. Of the 732 in special education salary increases, 472,400 are responsible, are because of staffing increase, I'm sorry, no. 420,000 of the special education increases of the 732,000
Yeah.
are because of additional positions.
And, and what about the other line? It says special education, two lines below that.
In district costs?
The two lines below the salaries.
Costs line?
But no, the special education, so the line that you were just talking about was the salary line, right?
Is that what you're asking about?
So, so you, you said in the salary line, there was 700, there was around a 700K, which was due to new positions.
The, okay.
Some of its new positions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm wondering what, though, those are two separate categories, the salaries and special education salary. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what makes an expense go into one category rather than another one.
Okay, the special education salary, which is three, three lines from the bottom?
Yes.
That number is a piece of the 19 million, okay? It's, it's not separate.
Oh, so that's included, that's included in the salary.
Included in your $19 million line, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Pulling it out just to highlight it.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
That's what I was wondering, yes.
Okay.
And, and one of the points here is that we are putting some classes in place in the district, which means we won't send children out of district. And we actually save money even though the costs are going up so much. The costs off, you know, most every year go up a lot, but this is a way of actually saving something and keeping kids from having to travel every day to an out of district school. But it's, it's expensive in salaries and also in special services in the in-house like occupational therapy and speech therapy and so on. Any other board questions on this? Okay. So Scott, are you completed?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. There was an error in making this agenda and public comment should have come next. So with the board's permission, I, I'd like to move number 12 to before number 11 and do public comment at this time. And then we'll have another public comment period after all of the board committee reports and new business, old business and president's report. And this will be, this was fixed last time inadvertently wasn't, and then it'll be fixed in the future, I'm, I'm promised. And this public comment period, like to keep it to three minutes per speaker, please, since we have board business to do and then I'm very happy for people to come back and talk more at the very end of the meeting. So the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164, 167, establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. And Mr. Schoolman, I see your hand up so you can take the floor.
Okay, I can't believe I raised my hand first. That must be, that's a first anyway. Hi, everybody. I'm a parent. I have two sons in Highland Park Schools in Irving and we love Highland Park Schools. We've had a great experience. We love the teachers and the staff, the whole deal.
We need you, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
We need your address.
423 Harrison Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. So I was going to say, I, you know, as I said, we love Highland Park Schools. You know, I, I had this kind of weird feeling watching some of the students recognition earlier on when you, we can certainly celebrate the people who have, you know, triumphed over adversity, the heroic measures the teachers are taking. But I can't, I think we can't let that persuade us that things are generally okay or going to be okay. So anyway, I just thought I would read the abstract of an article, a recent article, 2021 from the Journal of Youth and Adolescence. The restrictions put in place to contain the COVID-19 virus have led to widespread social isolation impacting mental health worldwide. These restrictions may be particularly difficult for adolescents who rely heavily on their peer connections for emotional support. This study followed 200 and some high school, middle school students. Moderation analysis revealed the COVID-19 related worries, online learning difficulties and increased conflict with parents predicted increases in mental health problems from T1 to T2, that is before and after the pandemic lockdown. This study provides initial longitudinal evidence for the decline of adolescents' mental health during the COVID-19 pandemic. The results suggest that adolescents are more concerned about the government restrictions designed to, designed to contain the spread of the virus than the virus itself, and that those concerns are associated with increased anxiety and depressive symptoms and decreased life satisfaction. Now, this is in a, you know, well regarded peer reviewed journal, over a hundred, over a million downloads last year. This is what's happening to our students. And I'm happy for the students that, you know, are triumphing and the, and the teachers are helping them do that. But the couple of cases we see that you see today do not necessarily present the majority of students here. I think we should take that very seriously. With that in mind, I wanted to ask a question, which is that the CDC has recently issued new guidance that says that three feet social distance among students masked, everyone masked in schools is fine. Basing, basing this on studies that have showed that there's no difference in caseloads or outbreaks between schools that have a six foot rule and a three foot rule. So given that the CDC has issued this new guidance, I'd like to ask what, how this new guidance will shape the district's plan for reopening its schools. You know, presumably, since this, since the distance recommended between students has decreased, we can see more students in classes sooner, but I'd like to hear what the district has to say about that.
Mark, do you want me to answer that question?
Yeah, please.
So Ethan, we will certainly be following CDC guidelines to get more kids in school. So yes, the three foot guideline will certainly be followed as soon as I am confident it's possible to do so. So the answer to your question is yes, we will follow the guidance. I'll be discussing it with my stakeholder groups this week. I have two meetings coming up. And as soon as I feel confident that we can do so, we will.
So what are your criteria for feeling confident? I feel like the, the CDC guidelines, which I read pretty carefully, were pretty clear. I mean, you know, regardless of what different groups might feel about this, the science is very clear. I mean, some groups might feel unsafe, but there's no evidence based reason to feel unsafe relative to the six foot distance.
Well, if, if you've read the CDC guidelines, as I'm sure you have, you recognize that it's also clear that communities must be wary of community spread before they can make a shift to those three foot guidelines. Right now, our community local infection rate is, is relatively high. I think today we're up to 36 cases over seven days, Mark, I think you
Yeah, that's correct.
That, I think it's 36 cases. We're seeing a, we're seeing a downtick and I'm, I'm very pleased to see that, but of course I have concerns about what spring break is going to bring. So as soon as I'm confident we can do so, we will follow the three foot guidance.
Okay.
There's, there's more to that answer, which I'd like to follow up with. At the moment, approximately 70 or 75% of the parents in the district have chosen not to have their children in. So that three foot guideline doesn't make much of any difference. Whether it's three foot, four foot, five foot or six foot, we don't have enough children coming into the schools to make any difference. Furthermore, we are now, it, it, Dr. Taylor said, you know, we're kind of above the CDC guidelines for risk of the disease community spread. We're not above it, we're well above the highest levels of risk. And yet, because in our zeal to open the schools, we really, really want to open in-person education. Because what you read, we've all read, we've all read in 10 articles and we all care about, and we want to get the schools in person as soon as we can in the, in the strongest way. We, we've opened the schools, we've had not outbreaks in the schools, but we've had students and teachers come to school who have the disease and then we have to quarantine a classroom full of, full of students and two or three or four teachers. So it's really a balancing act now. We're nowhere close, oh, and as, as, as a sideline to all of that, New Jersey has the highest rates of COVID-19 of any state in the country right now. So it's a real balancing act and we don't have enough students to, that, that makes a difference yet. But as the, as the vaccines come out, hopefully as people heed mask wearing and social distancing and so on, the disease starts to wane, that three foot distance will make a real difference and we intend to do it. And we will do it, but it really requires lots of other issues being taken care of that aren't under our control.
Can I, and I may not be able to because of other questioners, speak quickly to the not enough students point, I'll, I'll take 20 seconds, I promise. Which is that we're waiting, you know, right now our, our kids have bonded with their teacher in their class. And so we would love to go back, but you know, we don't want to do it until the teacher that they're familiar with is there. So it's a bit of a chicken and egg problem. Until, until all the teachers are back, you won't have enough students. But if the students go back, you won't, you won't bring the teachers back. So I think we have to recognize that students want the teachers they're used to now.
We, we, we understand as soon as, as soon as the staff is vaccinated and you know, there's a group in town working really hard to, and Dr. Taylor, who's gotten at least two different centers, oops, you moved, they are two different centers, including the local pharmacy and one of the local clinics to offer our teachers vaccine. As soon as our teachers are vaccinated, for to offer our teachers vaccine. As soon as our teachers are vaccinated, for the most part, they will be back. And it's not that far from now. And once they're back, students can start coming back more. However, you know, we had to close after, the week after spring break because too many people are, are traveling and they're traveling to places where they have to be quarantined. I fear that we'll come back from spring break and the week after spring break, and the numbers will be in town double what they are now, and New Jersey will be in worse shape than we are now. And we'll be forced by our guidelines and the CDC guidelines to not do any in-person. That's a fear. It's a serious fear. It's happened before. So we want to do what you want to do, and we want to have the three-foot guidelines, and we want the teachers back. And we're doing everything in our power to do that. That's really the only answer I could give.
And, and I do need to remind the board and the community that one of my missions is to make people at least feel safe, right? I mean, make them feel confident they're gonna be operating in a safe and healthy environment. The survey that I conducted, the results of which I shared with the board and the community last week showed the vast majority of respondents, the four hundred and twenty-one respondents said that they had concerns about health and safety, which is what prompted them to have their kids be home. I've got to be mindful of that. You know, every community in the state seems to take a different tact. Our community, for the very large part, is concerned about health and safety.
And you, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I did want to just say, I mean, we recognize, I think there is a waiting list for people to come back at Bartle and possibly at Irving. So I mean theoretically, could we open tomorrow with, you know, the three-foot distance and accommodate some of those people? I mean, my understanding is that yes, we could theoretically, but you know, we're in a red zone, a CDC red zone. We're allowed to stay open now that we're open, but if we were closed, we wouldn't be allowed to open. You know, we're that dangerous. I think, but Mark said what were the, were the, you know, the highest positive rate in the country now? Here in New Jersey and Middlesex County is also not doing very well. So we are questioning whether this is the time to immediately expand the number of kids in the classroom. I mean, I'm really going back and forth on this on a, as a person, from a personal perspective, I really want those schools open. But it just seems like we're like in a really bad patch right now, so maybe it's not the time to jam more kids in. And of course, it's Scott's decision, but I do recognize people are on a waiting list and they want to come back, particularly if their teachers can come back. But even if their teachers can't come back, there are probably people who want to come back right now. And we just, it's been decided that this is not the time to, to people in more, more closely.
So Mr. Schoolman, thank you very much. And I see another speaker. Carol McCarty, please give your address. I always forget that, but I didn't this time. Please give your name and address.
Hi, everyone. Carol McCarty, forty-three Harrison Avenue. I have a question. You mentioned that you're anticipating that more staff will come back once they've been vaccinated. And you said it would be soon. Do you have a timeline on that? Do you have any idea how many staff are going to come back and when that might be?
I, I, as I pointed out last week, it's my intention in early May, I can't tell you exactly what day, I mean, I'm shooting for the week of, I think it's May sixth, the first week, to have all faculty who I accommodated for medical reasons return. Of course, as has been the case in some districts, some faculty may decide to take leave, whether without pay or, or, or with pay, if they can work that out. I also need to point out that I had been surveying staff already, so I'm, I'm well on my way to determining who can, who can come back. FYI, you know, this is gonna happen as soon as I'm confident that every, that best, best majority of my faculty are vaccinated. Right now, we're, we're trending we're trending to a, a, a pretty high rate of people who've been vaccinated. I want to echo what Mark said about the programs we've developed. As president of the county superintendent's group, I've been able to work with my peers to create two programs. One has local school districts that have made partnerships with pharmacies like Rite Aid, Walgreens, CVS to pull vaccine appointments so that we can distribute the appointments to all the districts that in the county, there are twenty-six of us, according to our needs. I was able to obtain thirteen appointments. Actually, I was able to obtain thirty appointments this, this week. I only needed thirteen so far based on my survey results. I'm still getting survey input. The second program is going to have Penn Health Medical. Their main location is in Princeton, number one. Take its mobile unit and mobile vaccine unit, go out to school districts like ours, set up shop for a couple of hours, half a day, and vaccinate everybody in one fell swoop when needs it. So we're, we're getting closer.
Thanks. And I also have just one other question. You had mentioned, Dr. Taylor, that you were planning on giving the district some information on the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year in April. Do you have any idea when in April that'll be?
I'm hoping it'll be April, the week of April twelfth. I'm waiting on a couple of more meetings. My leadership team and I have been having to iron out nuts and bolts. As I said last week, I don't want to just throw out things that, you know, stick on a wall and we hope stick. I want to have hard, concrete, detailed plans that I can share with the board and the community. And I'm anticipating sometime in April, mid-April, April twelfth that week.
Absolutely, but I hope that you're also taking into consideration that the chances are this virus really isn't leaving us anytime soon and that all of us really need to find a way forward to live with it. Vaccinated, masking, you know, distancing based on CDC requirements, and I'm hoping that you will build into that plan flexibility, ability to pivot, ability to, you know, work with what is happening at the time with full-time instruction as the main goal, because that still hasn't really been stated. Everybody says that they want the kids in school, but nobody is committing to the goal being full-time in-person instruction for all kids.
I appreciate you distinguishing what you mean by kids in school and full-time. We have kids in school.
No, no, full-time, full-time.
Right, good. I'm glad you clarified.
Because what, what the kids in Highland Park are getting is not full-time instruction. While I will complete, I, what my child is getting is very good quality education. But the amount of education that they are getting is absolutely not the same. And at some point in the near future, I'd really like the district to talk about how much of the curriculum the kids are going to be getting through this year, just so that we can all, you know, understand what the difference is between this year and our regular year. Just so we can all know sort of where, where we're all gonna end up at the end of this year, because they're probably not gonna get through the entire year's curriculum, right? So where does that leave us?
That's a good idea for me to share with you, Carol. So I'll try to do that around that time in April. Perhaps I can combine that information with the presentation I'll make about the summer and the fall. We're looking at summer closely too, so not just, not just the fall.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you very much. Any other public comment this time? Okay, well, I'd like to thank both the public commenters. That was useful and helpful. And I'd like to say the board would like to see nothing more than those timelines and those movements forward. And indeed, all of the students in school full-time or close to full-time, if we have to live with this disease. And then we'd also like to see the teachers back two weeks after their second vaccination. And you know, I've had my second vaccination. I'm a little older than most of the people in the meeting. I've had my second vaccination. I plan on, and I, I've just gone over my two-week. I, I'm planning to, I'm not gonna be working there, but I'm planning to walk around and visit the schools and wear my mask and see what's personally face-to-face going on. So I hope we can start seeing our teachers back as soon as possible. So thank you. I'm gonna move on then to board committee reports. And Michelle, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm going to shut off my video. And we have a little bit of an update on one of our agenda items. The approval of the updated district school calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So we're going to do Irving Back to School Night, September twenty-third. And that is because the holiday Yom Kippur starts on the fifteenth. And so we needed to adjust and the calendar will reflect that. So that's a change in number one. The second agenda item is the approval of New World Language Course Mandarin Four in the high school. And that's for grade levels ten and eleven and twelve as an elective. So kids are now completing their Mandarin Three and they're going to need Mandarin Four. So that is number two on the agenda. And number three on the agenda is the approval of submission of the school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Number four is the approval of university graduate students for teaching internships, junior practicum observations for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And those are Irving and Bartle School teachers that will be running that program with their student teachers. So that does it for the agenda. And I didn't have any questions from any of the board members about our our committee meeting. So I'm just going to assume that everyone is, you know, updated and okay with what happened at the meeting as per my notes last week. I'll just leave it at that. Everyone has their committee report that I sent to them through email, so that's it for me from curriculum. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the board or comments about the agenda items? Okay, then I'm gonna go on to finance. So we've seen item one before. That's the budget item. Item two through four are also, we talked about in our workshop, are presented in the workshop meeting. Item five is a new bill list item for approximately seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Costs from February first to fifteenth. Item seven is a new bill list from March first to fifteenth in the amount of thirteen hundred ninety-two dollars. Item ten are several new contractors. One is, well, actually Martin Blank and the Institute for Multicensorial Education are both funded by Title I funds. And the KDH Enterprises Review of Student Program Per Settlement Agreement. That's another new item, and that's, I think, I believe, a special ed item.
Yes.
Item eleven is a retroactive payments of district out-of-district placements. These are for displaced students. Item twelve has one out-of-district placement A and a second one, item B. So you can see the costs, the costs for special education, in this case, out-of-district placements are phenomenally high, sixty-two thousand. But of course, the child needs this, so they need to be sent. We discussed thirteen and fourteen last time. We have a list of mini-grants from the HP Education Foundation. And the board thanked the HPEF and Rob Magaziner, who goes to these meetings as the board representative. So thank you, folks, for that money for our teachers. It's quite a long list. There's a contract addendum number sixteen from Source for Teachers. They provide a substitute teachers. This is the, the cost for substitute social workers, which are quite significant, it turns out. Item seventeen is a, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Is for the board to continue to participate in the NJSBA. That's the New Jersey School Boards Association, ACE's program for cooperative pricing to save us some money. And then eighteen and nineteen are both upgrades to our wireless system and firewall. They are for forty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. A wireless access point, sixty-six access points. We get rebates of up to sixty percent, I would hope, but I'm not clear that we might be able to use some of the money that the federal government has been giving us towards the CARE, CARES money for COVID nineteen. Perhaps we can use some of that for the upgrade for the other forty percent. And the same for the firewall, which is costing us. We're upgrading the firewall, purchasing a firewall at twenty-six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. We will use two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two budgeted funds, so we can't make that order until we have final budget approval for next year. So I sped through that. But does any board member have any questions or comments, please? Darcy?
Hi. So my question is on item ten. Should have all of those Orton Gillingham trainings. I know that this has been something that we've been talking about, but I don't feel like we ever came to a point where at least to the full board, we got an explanation of how training a bunch of teachers in Orton Gillingham is going to fit in with the teachers that we already have who are fully trained in Wilson. And how that is all gonna play out and what the rationale is for having some staff trained in one program, other staff trained in another program. So I'm a little surprised to see this popped onto an agenda.
Michelle, do you recall the, I think it was an email that Michelle Rodriguez sent you? Because she, Darcy, Michelle Rodriguez was gonna present a report to the curriculum committee about the work she's done to research the relationship between Wilson and Orton. I believe she sent the curriculum committee an email. I can pull it up.
She did, but she did not get a chance. We ran out of time. She did not get a chance to present to us. So we didn't have the opportunity as a committee to ask questions.
Okay.
So I don't think that this item was on the last agenda, and I was not made aware that it would be on this one.
No, it wasn't the last agenda, and that's why I'm kind of, I was hoping that there'd been some additional
No.
patient about it, so that, you know, before the board approves this expense, we know how that all gonna
Yes. I, I have to say from my perspective, and I hope that the committee would agree. We didn't have much time to really research or even discuss. So I don't feel super comfortable with voting on this item.
Okay. I, just one thing, I, we could, we could table the item if you'd like. I just need to make one point. The money that we're using is gonna be Title I money, which unfortunately we'll lose. We can't carry over.
It's not about the, it's not about
I get it.
You know, where the money's coming from is how's the program gonna work? You know, we can't approve programs, even if the money's just falling out of the sky from somewhere, if it's not gonna be sustainable and it's not gonna fit with the program that we already have. So it seems like we need, at least in the curriculum committee, some sort of presentation as to how that's gonna work before the full board is asked to approve that expense.
Okay.
We're not gonna lose this money, are we, if we wait one month to approve it?
No, no, no. I just, at some point, unfortunately, we don't, we, we've carried over too much money. So we'll have to use the money for something. But we do have a curriculum, board curriculum committee meeting on April thirteenth, so I can have Michelle make a presentation to the committee at that time.
Please, let's do that. I'll table it.
Thank you. And if, if I could just ask, before that meeting, could we have Ms. Rodriguez, you know, at least be in receipt of that question that Darcy asked about how those two programs would work or not work together?
Yep.
And how that would benefit having some teachers trained in one and that some teachers trained in the other. So I think those are good, specific questions that she can take her time, you know, to come up with an answer by April thirteenth. That would be wonderful.
She has that information because I directed her to get it. And she confirmed that she has it. Now, I'm just, can you do me a favor though, Michelle? When you get a chance, could you forward me the email that she sent you? Because I don't see it. I, I don't know if you gave it to me. About
Yeah, I'll do that. Right, I'll do that right away.
Well, I'm gonna table this, but, and then Anne, Monique, do you have?
I was actually going to make a similar comment in that I was also surprised to see this on the agenda, but we covered that. And I think there were a couple more questions that I wanted to add to that list of questions, Michelle, so I'm glad you raised that, because one was also about just coverage in terms of the extent to which the method would be used with the student population. I think that was one of the areas that was really gray, so I really wanted to get a better sense of that as well. So thank you for tabling that. And I think what I wanted to ask also is also number ten, and that's the last item that KDH Enterprises. Is that for a student, an out-of-district student? I'm assuming that
Yes.
It was, okay, so I'm gonna It was, okay, so I'm going to agree with you on. Okay, great. Thank you. And then I guess I, I guess I kind of have a general comment that I'd like to make about the characterization of our expenses for special education services. Because I really feel a bit of sensitivity around that. And I know that, you know, costs are are high when you look at the bulk figure for tuition for students that are placed out of district and for busing and so forth. But we're also, we also have on the agenda tonight, the approval for, which is now off, for PD, for teachers covering a few months. That's, you know, 16, almost $16,000. And we're talking about educating a student that needs, requires special education services and support at the rate of, you know, 55,000 a year. So I just think, looking, when we look at those big numbers, we say, oh, that's so much. And it is, I understand. But I feel like when we continue to let that be the driver of our kind of, or how we frame our special education expenses, it really, to me, is a bit of a drag and it makes it feel like, it makes me feel like a burden. It's almost like from a burdensome perspective. And I know that's not the intention at all. But I just want to kind of point that out because I, I feel that way and maybe others do as well. And so I think just understanding that this is of the reality that we have, and I know we understand that. But probably de-emphasizing just how expensive and costly it is. Because that's, that's just the constant theme we hear every time we talk about our special education budget and our students. And I don't think that's the best way to kind of approach that expense item. Especially given, again, when we look at the smaller, slightly smaller expenses that are smaller, but yet covering a much smaller amount of time and more, a less significant amount of our population.
Monique, thank you. Thank you. I, I agree. And if I characterized it in any way like that, I apologize. One of the issues that we face is that the special education schools really have no, they have nobody looking at the prices they charge. So we might send a child to one school, which is a public school with special education, and pay half as much as a private school. And there's no rhyme or reason behind it. And sitting in a finance desk, it's very difficult to, to understand and to really take when we're cutting other programs. But again, I tried to characterize it differently in my own defense.
Thank you. And I wasn't pointing you out specifically, but yes, I did think about that. And I'm in these schools, you know, regularly. So I see all that it takes to go into educating students in specialized
And, and to make it more personal, my grandson is in a special ed school in, in New York City, which is, which does have rates set by the city. And he's in a wonderful school and it's amazingly great for him. So I'm all in favor of this. Anne, you were next.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we had any ire to deliver, perhaps we could deliver it at the schools that are gouging our students that are making it difficult for us to educate our students who so sorely need these services. I mean, burden is not caused by our students. It's caused by uncontrolled price increases at these schools, at some of these schools. I did have a question about Orton Gillingham. Were those trainings, were those going to be offered in tandem with the tutoring program that we had discussed? Scott, it was going to offer us free tutoring in exchange for Okay, so one of the benefits of this would be that it would come with a year of free tutoring from however many teachers are being trained. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And I know that in terms of the tutoring, I don't know much about Orton Gillingham. But in terms of the tutoring, the presentation from the provider to us indicated fairly strongly that in a tutoring program, a tutor who's getting trained in Orton Gillingham can provide support to our students without sort of, without sort of, you know, contradicting the curriculum that we're teaching or the methodology that we're teaching. In other words, from the perspective of teaching a child how to read, how to read better, how to read more clearly, how to, how to have an easier time reading. The methods are, you know, are not at cost purposes. So I, I mean, I think that losing out on the tutoring would be devastating. So I, I hope that we are convinced by the explanation that we get. I'm not on the committee, so I won't be there to be influencing the process.
Darcy, did you have a question? Or comment?
More of a comment, yeah. I mean, and to what Anne just said, you know, obviously, I 100% want more of our teachers trained more precisely to handle students, you know? I mean, a lot of you know that this has been an issue that's been very near and dear for me because one of my children is dyslexic. So it's been a years-long, you know, mission to bring any kind of services to the district. Because when my child was first diagnosed, there were none. So, you know, I've been very active in, in getting these services, period. And I just want to make sure that what we're bringing in is a compliment and understand how it's all going to work together. Because I've seen firsthand how the district can provide resources to a student. But if they're not the right resources, they're pretty meaningless. So, you know, these programs are invaluable to students with print-related disabilities. So I do want to see more of them. I just want to know how it's all going to work in concert together. And then back to Monique's point about the special ed costs. I completely understand your point, Monique, and I've always bristled at the same thing. But as Mark said, you know, from a finance perspective, we have, over the years, separated out particular line items. More is a, in an attempt to educate the public in terms of how hard it is to balance a budget on a 2% increase. When you have particular line items that increase by 20, 30% in one year, it becomes next to impossible to make your budget balance, you know? And for years, it was kind of funny that, you know, that special ed line item will get pulled out alongside with the charter school item, a line item. And we don't really pull the charter school one out very often anymore because those costs have really decreased and gone down. You know, but the irony there was, you know, it tends to be the kids in the charter schools tend to be easier to educate, lower cost, and then the district is responsible for educating kids, whether it costs, you know, $8,000 to educate them or $80,000 to educate them. And it's important to educate the public about that, that, you know, you can't compare our per pupil, our per pupil costs to, you know, anybody else's per pupil cost because we have to and should educate everyone, so.
Thank you, Darcy. Chris, you, you had some, something to add, please?
Well, yeah, I mean, just to clarify my concern, I mean, I, I find the fact that the $700,000 in new salary was funded by a carryover really terrifying. You know, I mean, this year we were able to do that because we had the money left over from last year. Well, next year, we're not going to have a 700,000 carryover because of the pandemic. And we're still going to have the same expenses. So I, I find that really concerning.
And that's what keeps me up at night and wakes me up at 4:00 AM in February. Because, and, and I, what I didn't point out in my presentation is how wonderful it felt that I didn't have to include a slide about the staff I had to riff with the programs I had to cut. So far, I haven't cut programs drastically, but we have lost staff.
And in the past, we have also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Scott. We have also weakened up with the lack of extraordinary aid that we get. You know, Mr. Colentano always says it really well. It's good that you got more extraordinary aid. But the fact that you need that much extraordinary aid is bad because it means your expenses are so over the top. And the extraordinary never comes close to covering them. So in the past, I think we've maybe gone over a little bit more of how dramatic our expenses are and how it shouldn't be our burden locally to shoulder them. How those funds should be coming from the state and federal government, right? And Joe Biden campaigned on a promise to triple Title I funding. You know, there's been, there's always promises of all this money that's going to come at districts to serve the needs of students. But it always seems to land on the district, you know, whether we're talking about special ed costs or, you know, deciding how to run a pandemic at a school, like, things just get dumped down to the local level, so.
And that's the, but that's the context and the conversation that we need to have more of and center and frame this finance struggle that prices really that we have around, right? So, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Yeah. And, and what makes it worse, not that I want to raise taxes on anyone, but we can raise, we can only raise taxes 2%. And if we get new ratables and we can refinance bonds, the amount that the taxpayer pays might actually go down. But we still can't fund our program because we're only allowed to raise taxes 2%. It's really outrageous and ridiculous. And Chris, there you are, next to me. Now, this Zoom keeps moving people around. It's really hard to manage this. We, we, we are, I've been uneasy for five years since I've been on the board with, with this finance stuff, which I know very well. How are we going to make it next year? What are we going to do next year? What program is going to go away? Or maybe we'll be lucky, we won't have to make a program go away. The whole concept that the state uses of not letting us raise taxes, not funding us, and not helping us. And as I've said before, 30 years ago, when I was on the Board of Education, and we had special costs, special education costs, we got a sizable portion of that paid for by the state directly back to us. It wasn't 600,000 out of 5 million. If it had been 5 million, we would have gotten 3 million back. They stopped doing it. So it's put all the burden on the local taxpayer, as Darcy said. It's just outrageous. And it's a miracle that we balance budgets every year. And I would say, thanks to Linda and thanks to the work Scott does. Because otherwise, you know, and, and the committee working very, very, very hard with lots of meetings and our administration. It's a miracle. Anyway, Michelle, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I heard Monique say something and I just kind of lit up. Because I feel like we, you know, as a, as a, as a board, not me personally, of course, but you guys on finance and, and Scott and Linda, you do work miracles. But I don't feel comfortable relying on miracles. And I feel like Monique said that, you know, really, the conversations that we should be having are kind of more in line with not being okay with the status quo, with the way things are. And, and trying to have more of those conversations, I feel like, you know, it's so relevant during this pandemic. We're, we're trying to do the impossible without any kind of organization. You know, I have friends and family in Europe and their idea of a vaccination schedule isn't scrounge around in your local institutions to see if you can find a vaccine. It's, you know, you sit at home and wait for a phone call from the health service. And you don't have to have, you know, savvy social media or technical skills. And you get a date and then they send you a paper copy of that date to confirm your vaccination. These are the types of things that we should know exist in other places. Now, this is an example for, you know, our medical services. But we know that other places do it better than we do. And we need to start talking about those places. We need to start having those conversations. And so thank you, Monique, for bringing that up. But, you know, I'd rather, like I said, not rely on miracles and the, you know, unbelievable intellect of people who work with numbers on our local school budget. It's, it's way bigger than what we can do here. And we keep, you know, rising to the occasion. And I feel like we shouldn't, at some point, rise to the occasion because that's really not helping. And so, yeah, if it sounds like I'm, you know, promoting some kind of radical action, I am. I, I just don't know what else to say.
Well, there's a group of 200 districts right now that are about to launch a campaign against S2 because their districts are losing millions and millions and millions of dollars in funding. And, you know, even Herculean efforts like that of getting 200-plus districts to advocate together very often doesn't change this. So, you know, as somebody who's been doing this work for over a decade now, it can become, you know, both at the state and national level. It can become very frustrating when there isn't the political will to fund our public schools.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can we go on to, are we ready to go on to personnel?
I can go on to personnel.
Anne, could you take over?
Most of this we've seen before. The one, the items in bold are new. Number four, we have a new, an extension of a paid FMLA leave. Number five, an extension of a maternity leave, maternity slash childcare leave. Number six and seven, we have two resignations and we wish those staff members well as they move forward. Everything else we went over last week. The, okay, number 15, funding for the grade recovery program. There's just a note here, I think we talked about this last week, that this particular funding will be coming from one of our CARES grants.
Yes.
The, oh, number 22. We have a new approval for a volunteer baseball coach. Thank you to Mr. Rubin for stepping up. And we have some new Schedule B appointments. Okay, here we go. This is sports, spring, track, softball, or track, baseball, softball. So you guys can look over those. They are self-
All of which will be taking place outdoors.
Yay.
Thanks. Thank goodness. Scott, I know we've talked a lot internally about substitutes. I see, you know, as usual, we're approving our Source for Teacher substitute list. And it seems to me they have not been much use to us lately because we can't get substitutes. Do we have any other avenues of, I appreciate you responding to my question just recently about that. Where are the substitutes?
So my, my colleagues and I talked about this last Wednesday. There, many of them are concerned about how they're going to cover teachers who are quarantining after spring break. That's why the question came up, which, which also is one reason why more and more districts are deciding to, to do what we're doing, close after spring break. The, the head of Source for Teachers said it best. He said, look, people either are scared to come in person or they don't feel it's worth the money to sacrifice what they feel is a sacrifice of their physical well-being. And others, particularly those of an older generation, because, you know, we do have a fair share of retirees who come back and, and sub, whether they be in the teaching, from the teaching ranks or not, who aren't tech savvy and don't feel confident about teaching remotely. So we're struggling. We've, we've, we've done a couple of things. As some of the board members know, Susan O'Donnell and I pillage the Graduate School of Education for all the student teachers we can get our hands on. And we got a good number of student teachers who were here and a couple who were local. And we were able to pull them in and we've hired them as long-term subs. You don't pay them long-term subs rates, but we don't provide them health insurance. They go through Source. But they are mainstays and we're using them however we can, like, like as utilities, essentially. We've also posted through our media accounts that we use when we post all jobs. We're struggling. And, and all, and, and look, it's, it doesn't appear, one thing I examined was whether it was a matter of salary. Our rates are fairly competitive with other districts. Brian Engel did not feel, he's the head of Source for Teachers, did not feel that that was an issue.
Is that because everybody's using Source for Teachers or are we offering an enhanced salary during the pandemic for substitutes?
We haven't changed our salaries, no.
It's just the same standard Source for Teachers rate?
Yeah, it's 100 and, I think it's $115 if you're certified, if you're certified as a teacher, you're also subbing.
I'm not surprised that the head of Source for Teachers thinks that that's a competitive rate. Are other districts using different services or, I mean, I know-
Some here, there. I mean, he, I have to imagine that he, in his role, scouts what the rates are in other districts, to other companies. And he, it shows us that it's a competitive rate. Look, I mean, Anne, I really, this is a systemic issue. I mean, it's not, it's, it's so, so even if we're having a problem, Old Bridge is having a problem. We're all trying to take from the same dried up pool, which is not helping the, the situation. Hey, and I'll add one more thing about personnel and difficulties that people are having. Now, the concern superintendents have is the summer. In fact, I was just on a governor's task force call today about this. We're concerned that people will not want to work during the summer for fear of their health, safety and, and/or they just are burnt out. I'm talking about not just substitutes, but general teachers, certified teachers. And we may have a hard time staffing some of our summer programs. Districts like ours are going to be tripling or quadrupling the number of programs they offer. So I can tell you that one thing we're doing is we're going to put our postings out for summer positions in a couple of weeks, which is a few months ahead of schedule. So that we can try to keep our own people in
Yeah.
before other districts try to grab them.
I hope we can, I mean, burnout is real. I don't know what to do about that. I sympathize. In terms of health and safety, I hope that we can emphasize we will try to hold classes outdoors over the summer when we can.
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, just whatever it takes to make people feel a little more comfortable or if they haven't been vaccinated to, you know, to be a little-
Yeah, we had tremendous success with our social emotional learning program outdoors. There was academic, there was an academic component in that. So it's not as if we can't provide direct instruction with the weather.
Right, right, right.
Outdoors.
Okay, good. Whatever we can do with the board, if there's any CARES money or anything the board can do to sort of help- Okay, good. Whatever we can do of the board, if there's any CARES money or anything the board can do to sort of help make things safer for teachers over the summer, I think probably the board is delighted to to do that.
Um, Scott, on the issue of substitutes, in the past, we have offered more than competitive rates
Right.
for the Source for Teachers list, and I think we've done well with that. Uh, maybe we could talk offline about doing that again.
About just-
Do other board members, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do any other board members have personnel questions or comments? Oh, Darcy, I see you. Thanks, Darcy. Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, no, I just had a quick suggestion, because as we've, you just mentioned, Anne, and I'm sure we've all seen in our social media feeds, or if you have, you know, friends, relatives um who are teachers. This has been a year like no other for teachers. Um, and it's not like teachers went into this year, um, you know, getting the warm fuzzies, you know, it's, it's not been an easy decade to be a teacher. Um, so, you know, it, there's article after article um of teachers just saying, you know, I'm, I'm calling it quits. Um, so I'm wondering, it may be an idea, Scott, for you and for the Personnel Committee, you know, if we are seeing a lot of resignations to, you know, I don't know, Scott, if you always conduct exit interviews or talk to teachers, you know, whether teachers are leaving because they're just going to another district, or whether teachers are leaving because they're just like, peace out. Um, you know, it's, there's a lot of pressure on teachers right now. Um, and, you know, we need to acknowledge and respect that, and, you know, know that the the pressures that on them right now are just remarkable, bordering on unreasonable.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
And Monique, you had your hand up also.
Uh, yeah, uh, for fifteen, the grade recovery program, I think, Scott, you were going to get back to us unless I missed something with um some more information on, I think, the demographics of the students that would be that are being targeted for that program, uh, the numbers.
That was sent by email from Christina to you. Was we were expect, did you
Do I miss something?
Have a chance to see it?
Okay, so I was wondering if I missed something. I did not see that. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was sent to the Curriculum Committee. It was very detailed, and it had a video as well. So I'm really glad you're bringing it up, because I want to make sure that you get it, obviously.
Michelle? Do you want to share that with the board? Is that something you could share with the board?
I don't remember. I don't remember seeing that either. It may have just slipped through the cracks, but-
Well, when we're, I'll get down to it, but I sent it out, I think, last week, and we go back to the email. But it's a lot of information. If the, if the Curriculum Committee would like me to present that to the board in April, I can do that. Absolutely.
Send us the email, that'd be great too, Scott.
Yep, let me make sure that it went out successfully to the Curriculum Committee.
It went out to, uh, I got-
Oh, I see it now. I do see it. Okay, just-
Did I miss it too?
Then, yeah, it's definitely there, uh, March seventeenth. I don't know how I missed that. I'm sorry. Um, as, as uh-
I missed it too.
Teachers are in a wrong time right now. Just keep-
Well, I think I was blitzing at the board with all kinds of emails last week, so it's not surprising. But take a look, it's a video, an eight-minute video, and then a data chart.
Right.
Yeah, but this would be beneficial for the entire board to, because I know this was a conversation that involved
I'll send it to the-
several board members outside of our curriculum and Equity and Excellence committees.
Absolutely.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, and and I just want to note that the, the email, um, if for anyone who missed it, it, the title or the subject line is grade recovery data overview. Um, and it does say, I think what happened was I might have looked at this and scanned it, and it said, please let me know if you're amenable and able to meet Tuesday, April sixth at three thirty.
That's right.
So that was, uh, to me, an indication that this was not something that we were moving on until after that date. That, that was my bad, my, my assumption there.
Okay. Yeah, so, so Monique, what I suggested in the emails, I recommend both committees move up meetings, your committee and the Curriculum Committee, a week, so we can get talking about this again as early as possible, making an ongoing conversation. So I pulled it up. I'm going to send it to the rest of the board.
I just did, Scott. I just forwarded it to everyone.
Oh, good, thank you.
One last thing for you to do. Yep.
So I'm, I'm not actually prepared to vote on this, and I will say that, again, I didn't really push for Ds enough to be um off the table for students on these first couple of marking periods of, or the past couple of marking periods of less than our ideal, you know, pandemic remote learning for them, for the grades then to be acts to be recovered later. So um, I do, you know, again, while I do understand the importance of um helping to ensure that students have learned, um, I, I do think that there are ways that that could have been been done um in in more creative ways and in different ways um that are reflective of the times and not, again, putting on this grade recovery requirement, so to speak, on students, although I do understand it is not mandatory. Students can choose whether or not they do participate in this program. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll look forward to meeting about that and further discussing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with any personnel questions or comments on the board? Okay, let us move on, Dorsey, to policy and regulations.
Uh, yeah, so I don't have anything that I didn't say uh last week. Uh, we have the same policies um for second reading that we had at our last meeting. And uh, you have my assurances that I will do my best between now and next month's meeting to get some policies to, out to the different committees um for review, and I will try not to barrage you.
Great, thank you. Um, Monique, Equity and Excellence, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing new tonight.
Okay.
Not since the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that being said, we're going to go back to um the board uh action items, number thirteen. So, Michelle, would you please move the Curriculum Committee items?
Sure, I would like to move items one through four, please. With the correction on number one that I stated during the presentation.
Do we have a second?
Scott, can I, can I just, are, are, are you sure we don't need to have public comments since we just discussed the, the uh items?
Oh, I'm, um-
Well, you, you changed the public comment.
Yes, I did change the public comment. I have another public comment. You know what? We could do the-
Mark.
Another public comment. You're right, Chris. We could do another public comment here, and then we'd eliminate the one at the very end. So let's do public comment. Thank you. So let's do public comment now. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies one, six, four, one, six, seven, establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings, and in the future, that's where I would like to see the public comments at the beginning and one at this point. I did want to make a quick uh comment to the, to the public, which I forgot today to do. Uh, and that is, if you send any correspondence to board@hpschools.net, it will go to the board, it will go to Dr. Taylor, and it will go to Linda Huffler, who is our Board Secretary and Business Administrator. So the full board will get it, and um, Mr. Schoolman, we did receive your email, and um, thank you, and thank you for the article, and we, uh, you simply need to send that to board@hpschools.net, and and we'll all get it. So any public comment, please just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to move now to uh Michelle, who has moved, and we have had a second. Again, thank you, Chris. Um, and do we have any comment, board comment before we vote on the curriculum items? Okay, so Linda, could you take the role on this?
Um, can you tell me who seconded? Because I didn't catch that.
I did.
It was Rob.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you all. So um, on to finance and facilities. I'm going to move numbers one through nineteen, but I'm tabling on item ten. I'm tabling the motion on the Institute for Multisensory Education labeled funded by Title I, um, and hopefully that will appear on our April agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Okay, so Linda, let's have a roll on, roll call on that as well.
Ms. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, so on to personnel, Anne.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to move items one through twenty-five.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Linda?
Any questions?
Anyone? Any questions, comments?
Okay.
Okay, let's do the roll.
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, on uh everything, and except for fifteen.
And what is your vote on?
No, on fifteen.
Did we want to table fifteen?
Fifteen's the grants, is that? Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in person.
That's the, um, that we have to further discuss, the grade recovery program.
Yeah.
Why don't we table, why don't we, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, well, I just want to point out that this is a, I, I know, Monique, as we've discussed last week, you have a concern about an aspect of this program. I don't believe your concern focuses on this part of the program. This is the mentor mentee program we're developing for the car, I think we have twenty-four percent of our students who did fail those first two marking periods who would like to work with a mentor and a teacher to convert the grade. I think the concern you have has more to do with the other seventy-eight percent of the kids who we were proposing work with us during the summer. So I would hate to see for the board to table this resolution. It would certainly set us back. And it would surprise me, frankly, because I, I thought we, at this point, had addressed whatever concerns you may have about that part of the recovery program.
I guess I would support going forward on this, and then going back and, you know, ensuring we address it the next time.
I know that during the Curriculum Committee, we did ask for data that didn't get uh to us right before, it didn't get to me right till right before the meeting started, and I don't know that um that didn't, you know, I don't know that that's not something that Monique is, um, you know, taking into account, because we did-
The data that I shared, I'm sorry, the, the data that I, that I emailed you last week, which you unfortunately didn't receive until now, has to do more with your concerns regarding the kids who you did not want to have penalized over the summer for having to be required to make up work if they're going to move forward to the next school year. I just, I hope, I thought we made, I thought I made that clear. And I would be quite surprised if at nine thirteen, on the twenty-second, we decided we were going to table this item.
Well, I mean, I, again, uh, me not seeing the email certainly was my, is my problem too, but um, you did send it, and I appreciate that. Um, and maybe, again, I am a bit confused, but the um, this particular program is the mentorship piece, you're saying, that is not really connected to the um quote-unquote recovery of a grade or grades. Or is it demonstration of the students, um, the students demonstrating uh other ways that they've learned, I believe, is how you characterize it.
That's what this aspect of the program is. As the presentation pointed out to the Curriculum Committee a few weeks ago, there are two pieces of this grade recovery initiative. One is the one I'm recommending we move forward on tonight that would have students uh showing that they have some proficiency in the subject area, so we can convert their incomplete to a more acceptable grade. The other aspect of the program that it appears that you and Michelle have more, most concerns about, and perhaps others on the Curriculum Committee, is about the summer program. And you might recall that that Christina, Chrissy, and Caitlin presented several options, or several groups of students in the summer who qualify for different programs. Your concern, my takeaway is your concern is that we were unduly penalizing them essentially for having to do this work over the summer.
By requiring it. Is that right?
Before passing them along to the next school year.
Scott, if this were tabled, would this mean that the program couldn't, could not start on time?
Yeah.
Right, because when is this supposed to start? When is, what period does this particular aspect of the program cover?
First, first two marking periods, and-
So now, it's, it starts now, I think, right, Scott?
Yeah.
Mentors start work now.
Yes, we, we, we want to get these kids, this, this twenty-four percent of the kids who selected to do this, as much time as they can to work with their mentors. The people who I'm recommending that you approve for compensation will mentor these students, help guide them and work with them.
If I could just, if I could just interject though, during, during the-
Tabled. I don't want to see it tabled. Just say.
None of us, I don't think anyone wants to see it tabled, but
Well, I won't vote for it to table.
I won't speak for other people.
No, I, I don't, I'm just saying, I, I don't think, I don't think that anyone wants to see a table. Maybe I'm wrong. But I do recall having a question about why only twenty-four percent of the students who failed those two first marking periods opted for this mentorship program. And I don't recall getting any information on that. So I think that was one of the things that we did, you know, not have the information that we were asking for at the, the committee meeting. Um, and I was not aware that this was going to be holding anything up, but I did know that we had asked for some information that didn't get where it needed to go, and now it's on the agenda.
I do suggest something.
Or twenty-four students? I'm sorry, just to clarify, was it twenty-four percent or twenty-four students?
Oh, forgive me, you're right, twenty-four students. Add up seventy-nine.
And the program will start now?
I believe it's already been
Well.
begun, where teachers have gotten assigned students, one or two uh per teacher, so that part of the program has already begun.
Yeah, we, we haven't given them the green light, though. Um, and I have to remind the board that this is an agenda item that's now in its second or third week of being placed on the agenda.
Well, I would like to not, if it is supposed to start now, and it's for twenty-four students who have failed courses, I'd personally like to not table it. I'd like the students to get the help. And the fact that we didn't get the data is another issue, and is not good. But it's not something I would personally think is, is a reason to hold up the the mentoring of mentorship of those students. The students need the help.
I agree. I think we were trying to get more students involved.
Is the, um, Scott, could you, um, is the um, the mentorship specifically for those twenty-four or for the twenty-four plus, perhaps, anyone else who may want to sign up?
If anybody else who would, who signs up would be assigned to one of these mentors who you're approving.
Got it.
So Marilyn, I saw your hand first, and then Anne.
And just to support the, there was an email that came out that broke down demographically, these twenty-something students that have agreed. I would agree, we could definitely encourage more students, but let's at least get these guys started. If they're willing to work with a mentor, and we've got mentors willing to work with them, let's get moving on that, and then see how we can expand it going forward.
Um, thank you, thank you, Marilyn. Anne?
I, I understand one of Monique's concerns to be, I, just correct me if I'm wrong, this idea that we're focusing on, like, forcing the students to demonstrate something, when, you know, we were hoping to have the inputs, we're hoping to focus on the inputs, you know, making sure that the students are learning what they need to learn, or being given the material they need to get. Is that-
Well, yeah, that was the initial, that was the initial impetus for me to say, and many of us, necessarily, on that
Not just, not just you.
We need to de-emphasize the degrading at this point in, in education. And so here we are now putting back the emphasis on grading, um, in my mind, and I know apparently that's, I guess, the, the label too, just presents this program as doing just that. Let's recover those grades, um, when that was certainly in my mind, not the reason why I was pushing for students to have um, uh, for us to remove uh Ds and Fs from the table. But again, I'm all for student support and, um, you know, helping students achieve. And if students have opted into this program, which, again, I don't really feel like I know enough about mentorship and what that really means, because mentorship sounds good, but if it really is about, well, let me see how you can, what kind of grades you can show me that you can get now, or how much you know, uh, how are we doing this? How is this mentorship working? Are we assessing students? Are we testing them? Are we making them do a project? Are we, you know, what, what are the details? Um, and so, again, it's, it's my fault if I missed- And so, again, it's my fault if I missed that, those specific details that came in in the email, I will take responsibility for that. But I am not comfortable, and I'm not trying to hold up the show at all, but I personally am not comfortable with saying yes when I don't know those fine details, because of the fact that I don't feel like the burden should be on students, especially because I'm sure they've learned in ways that we haven't even recognized, because the system has not been designed to do that. So that's kind of where I am with it.
Monique?
I'm probably not understanding all of what you, I mean, I'm probably not going to be able to encapsulate all of what you said. But I mean, one thing, Scott, I hope the program, the program will involve teaching and sharing information from the mentors and the teachers to the students. It's not just going to be like chop, 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 show me what you know.
No, and Christina, Caitlin, Chrissy, I thought Christina, Caitlin, and Chrissy did a wonderful job presenting to the curriculum committee weeks ago, discussing just that, what the purpose of the mentor was, and that, which is essentially what you just said, to liaison with the teacher.
But there will be teaching going on. It's not just going to be like, show me your stuff, student. I mean, I realize that, like, there's more subtle components of this too, but there is going to be an emphasis on the teacher working with the student and teaching the student. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe the, yes, it was a thorough presentation, but again, I don't want to belabor this. The emphasis that I perceived was on, we need to also see what, we need the student to demonstrate and show us sort of, kind of what they have, what they know and what they've learned, and that they are able to kind of recover these grades. So there was, there's clearly emphasis on that.
Monique?
I was hoping there'd be a combination of support plus stuff. I mean.
Monique, I would suggest all is not lost, though. You are going to have your committees both meeting. I hope and expect that you'll have Dr. Taylor and Christina and Michelle, and, and perhaps Ms. Brady there to present what this program is in more depth and answer the questions. And it's not that far in the future, so you'll have some input on what they're doing.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know if this, I don't, this happens. I mean, I'm sorry it happens, but you know, it does happen, so. I don't really want to table it. I'd like to just get the money allocated. Let's do the right thing with it once they start with it. So can we take up the vote again, please? Linda, where were we? You were, I think, Monique.
As far as Ms. Coleman, she said no on 15.
Yeah, my vote will stay the same.
Okay, so let's move on.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Abstain on 15, and yes to the rest.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So we are now on to policies and regulations. Darcy, could you move your items, please?
I'd like to move policy and regulations, item number one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could you take the roll?
Ms. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay. So we have next on the agenda, number 14, board liaison reports. If you have a board liaison report, please raise your hand, board members. Rob?
Well, I, so I did not attend the HPEF meeting this past week, but I can tell you that they did meet. And I do have just a couple of notes, which really, we talked about earlier, the large number of mini-grants that have been received, are being received, and we appreciate as well, the Ed Foundation talked about kind of a relaunching and moving forward with its main goal of fundraising and how to do that. And so that's going to be an ongoing conversation. They are discussing a few different options, but, and they should be exciting, but they certainly are moving forward. So that's really, you know, I just wanted to let you all know that they are doing the work, and they are trying to move forward with the fundraising as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Rob, and thank you to HPEF. It's fabulous. Okay, any other board members with liaison reports? Certainly not that much going on now with the pandemic. Hopefully soon we'll be out of this. Okay, I do not have a president's report. Does anyone have old business? Does anyone have new business?
I want to quick, just mention something, Mark, for old. We, you know, you guys know that.
Old or new?
Old. We had that special meeting to adopt our two resolutions, and luckily, there's been great progress on getting teachers vaccinated, so I'm thrilled to see that. But on the other one, I'm afraid we're not going so lucky. You know, I'll keep my ear to the ground about what's happening testing-wise, but I think everyone's probably heard that the new Secretary of Education has come out and said that there's not going to be, you know, the federal government is not going to cancel the test this year, which is just beyond my comprehension that we're going to try to somehow make all students take a standardized test this spring.
I'm so angry.
Yeah, I mean, you guys know, my husband's a teacher in another district in third grade, and Biden's counselor is now, who should be working with students, who should be, you know, helping students in any myriad of ways, is now being pulled for meetings for testing, which just absolutely blows my mind. I mean, there's no time ever in public schools where we need all hands on deck for kids' mental health. And now, because of the federal government, we're having to pull those resources to start preparing for maybe giving a standardized test, so.
Our kids that barely have any education going on, any live education, are not going to spend another two weeks, like, doing this stuff? Come on, it's just.
How is that going to happen for kids who are full of load? And how is, I mean, there's just, I mean, there are more questions than there are answers, and it makes no sense whatsoever. It's remarkably disappointing. Joe Biden is literally on camera saying that he is against standardized testing. I mean, the words come out of his mouth on videotape. But, you know, we've seen the same thing with Governor Murphy. He campaigned against Park, and, you know, it's just, it's still here, it's just got a different name, it's still Pearson, it's still the same thing. So anyway, point just being, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done there, and if there's anything that we can specifically do, I'll do my best to bring it to y'all.
And Darcy, you're urging, I've spoken to our attorneys about the possibility of us just not doing the testing, and what the ramifications of that could be. So we will see. Chris, I saw you first.
Yeah, just, we didn't have a comment from Rob Scott today, and so I'm going to do a stand-in for him. And I just want to emphasize one thing he said last week.
One second, one second, one second, Chris.
Is this old business or new business?
New business.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to emphasize something that he said last week, which is so important, which is that many high school students are now eligible for vaccination. And he didn't, he maybe could have emphasized the importance of this a little bit more, but we're not going to reach herd immunity unless many high school students get vaccinated. And that's the biggest threat to next year. There are already variants kicking around, which are resistant to the current vaccine. So, you know, we really need to get this thing stamped out by getting kids vaccinated as well. And so it just seems to me that in order to do that, we're going to really have to make it easy for them, because if it's, if they have to drive an hour to Meadowlands, it's just not going to happen. And so I guess my question for Dr. Taylor is, is there any way we can make the school programs accessible to kids who are eligible?
Chris, that's a wonderful idea. I'll, tomorrow, I'll call my contact at Penn Health. They've been the most cooperative right now, and see if we can move on that. I can report back to the board. Thank you for putting that on my radar.
Michelle?
I guess this would be new business, considering it's kind of an idea that I had when Darcy was speaking about the standardized testing. Could we please find out if there are any kind of, you know, consequences, financial, et cetera, to us promoting an opt-out, so that we don't have to run the test? I feel like this is exactly what Mr. Schoolman was talking about, and I'm sorry that he's not here right now, but, you know, really being concerned about how students are doing in their mental health, as well as their physical health. This is a tremendously injurious decision by the federal government. And I don't want to participate in it. I don't want to have anything to do with it, and I don't, I feel like this is really, you know, when you see something, say something, that this moment. I don't want to pretend that this is okay, and just, you know, be kind of going along and being compliant. This is totally not okay, totally not okay. And, you know, if you want to find out for us, maybe from our attorneys, I don't know if that's the place to go, but could we please try to find out what the consequences would be of us as a district opting out?
Michelle, that's what they're checking for us now. I talked to Jonathan Bush about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Four or five days ago, whenever Darcy talked to me about it, I spoke to him. He said it's not, it's not 100% clear, but he has Doug Silvestre, who's one of the partners at the firm, who's an expert in this, checking into it for us, and we will hopefully soon get an answer. If we can do so, it is a resolution we can bring to the board, and the board can decide whether we want to do testing or not do testing.
I mean, more than a resolution, I would say, a revolt. I feel like this is beyond a resolution. And I would actually welcome some seriously, if strong, consequences. If we could do that, it would actually perhaps make news, and that ultimately would be a good thing, so.
I mean, we're not, I mean, as fun as it would be to think that we'd be revolutionaries, there are other districts are considering this. So I think there are going to be lots of districts that are going to start deciding to just say no. I mean, because it's really.
Yeah, this is beyond the pale.
Yeah, it's come to that point where it's going to have to be a systemic response, and not just, you know, individual parents opting out of tests. But, you know, we do have to make sure that, you know, we would protect the district financially and all of those things. So, you know, we can't just do it willy-nilly and then have some horrible unintended consequence. You know, we need to do it strategically and smartly, and, you know, and if we have a critical mass of districts willing to stand up and do it simultaneously, all the better.
I'm all for strategy. I just want to say that there does come a time when it is not going to be financially wise, but it's still going to be the right thing to do.
But we still have to run a district, so.
Yeah, so let's see what we hear. And I would say if we hear the right thing, you know, to the barricades, as you would say. But for the moment, let's strategically see what it might cost us. Hopefully, nothing, and then we can, we can vote, you know, in the resolution, we can vote not to provide the tests.
What's the timing on this? When are, when are those tests, are they the middle of April? What are they scheduled for?
They moved them a little later in April. Yeah.
So he says times. Like, three weeks or so.
I could pull up the timeline if you'd like, if you give me a second.
Okay.
I mean, I'm very used to being disappointed by politicians, but I have to say, this one really hurt. Like, this one just straight up hurt. And, you know.
I just don't, I just don't understand what the justification could be for running.
Measuring, measuring learning loss, but I mean, I think we know what the students have lost.
That's what they're looking to do, but.
I don't even know if that's, is that the justification you're hearing from this? No, yeah.
I saw that. I mean, some people are saying that in op-eds and things.
Honestly, I couldn't, I wasn't even able to listen to Cardona's speech on it, because I felt so just betrayed, like, honestly, just betrayed, that, you know, and fearful that despite Biden's very positive rhetoric around public schools and his connection to the unions and things that he said on the campaign trail, that it's going to just be Obama 2.0, and the DOE is just going to be staffed with, you know, former Obama people, and it's going to be race to the top all over again. And I can't do it again, you know, like, I really can't. Like, it just felt so depressing, you know? And Dave even said, you know, Dave's a teacher in New Brunswick, Cardona is being built up to kids as this just miracle, right? I mean, and he is, he's got such an amazing background. He came to this country, he didn't speak English, he came into the schools, he learned English, he excelled, he did all these amazing things. And now this is the first, this is his first thing out of the gate? Like, why?
You know what? He's a, he's a really good example, though, of what we need to look out for. When we hear all of these miraculous stories about individuals who overcome the odds, that is not what we're looking for. We are not looking for one individual per million. We are looking for systemic change. And so when we hear someone who overcomes the odds and they are lionized, I think we should have red flags, you know? We should have some alert go off and say, hey, what are they selling? Because that's what they're selling. They're selling the meritocracy, which has been proven to be completely antithetical to a democratic society. We are looking for systemic change that makes opportunity available to as many of us as possible. Not one dude who did a miraculous job learning a foreign language and overcoming the odds. Let's just diminish the odds. How about that?
Well, well said, Michelle.
I told Marilyn I'd get her the testing dates, but they did is they extended the window, so it starts, the testing window starts in April, April 5th, but it goes all the way to June 11.
So it really is, so we're going to do something, it needs to be pretty soon. I mean, it needs to be now, right? You're talking about testing.
It could start next week, and it can go all the way out to the end of the school year, essentially.
When are you planning to provide this if we go forward with testing? When would it start in Highland Park? That's really the operative question. And how long, how many days or weeks would it take?
It would take a few weeks, usually two weeks, and usually have, we would likely want it to happen prior to, leading up to Memorial Weekend. So you're looking at the second and third week of May.
So we do have a little bit of time.
Yes, and, and I'd be your, your man in the trenches to enforce whatever resolution this board decides to enforce. I have no, I mean, you can carry, I can definitely be there for you.
So our, our next board meeting is meant to end of April, and so I think it's about a month from now. So I'll certainly have an answer from Jonathan Bush, or from Doug. And we can visit that once we have the answer and put it on an agenda.
And I should have a better sense from other districts across the state, what other districts are.
It would help to see what their legal opinions are. As much as I love and trust our attorneys, be nice to hear what other districts found from, out from their attorneys, who might be the same attorneys, because they definitely represent a lot of districts. Okay, so any other older new business people? Okay, so the last public comment was actually moved up since we've had two public comments. And Scott, I would very much like it if we could put the first public comment after the superintendent's report, and the second one was tonight, after the board business, and then just not have any third one at the very end when we're ready to go home.
After the business, but before the vote at a voting meeting, right?
We'll make sure.
Committee reports, discussion, vote.
And if I could just throw out there again, if we're going to do that three minutes, and, you know, per speaker, 30-minute timeline, it's not always going to work out that we can have a back and forth, which.
I know.
And if, if we set that precedent and then stop doing it, that, you know, we're kind of setting ourselves up. So I think if we're going to do that at the beginning of the meeting, we really have to stick to the three minutes, and we really have to say, you know, if you have questions, they'll be answered after the 30 minutes, so that everybody gets a chance to participate within that 30 minutes. And then people can get a response if Scott has one after all the public. And then people can get a response if Scott has one after all the public comments are made. But if we keep having back and forth in dialogue with every public commenter, at some point, that's going to bite us in the behind.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should get, maybe we should reconsider the three minutes. I mean, I introduced that back when I added a third public comment period. We had like some board discussion about that. I, I wanted to just make sure that the first comment period was not too long because I wanted to be sensitive to board members, you know, desire to get to the board business. So maybe now that we're just going to have two public comments, we could go back to our usual practice. I've been encouraging people to, you know, be concise, but allowing them to speak and, you know, at longer length if they need to. I don't know. That'd be my proposal.
That encourages to have potentially, if we have a hot issue, to have a two hour public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which.
Well, we do have, we do have the rules and the policy to limit public comments, 45 minutes, which I'd rather not have to enforce, but I'm partly to blame tonight, at least only because there were no hands up. And you never know, lots of other hands could come up, but I didn't see any. I would like to keep it the way it is though, three minutes and 30 minutes and then second public comment period, just throw it open. And even though, thank you, Darcy. I, I appreciate that. And we'll try to be more careful. So I'd like to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. See you, some of you sooner, but in any event, next month.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Scott, could you?